I'll call the meeting back to order. We were just in executive session and have reconvened in open session. So we'll start tonight's meeting with citizens' concerns, as always. If anybody has a concern on an item not otherwise on our agenda, you may come up to the microphone and speak briefly.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I have a couple of questions about what seem to be secret committees or groups of people that are meeting in private, and one of them is the Housing and Acton Committee. And I realize that that's a private, non-official committee, and I'd like to know how many Acton officials are part of that.
I am not on that committee, so I'm not aware. If you'd like to submit an email, I'm sure we can find an answer. Janet, do you have any?
I wouldn't want to wager guess. I mean, there are a number of public officials, and they aren't secret. We had a public forum about housing, and one of the people who was facilitating invited people who are interested in this group to go up, and you were at that meeting and did not apparently talk to her, so.
Oh, I was talking to them. I wasn't invited, but if there are meetings and people can come, I'd like to definitely be part of that. My next one is the Super Kelly's Corner Committee. Apparently, there's another Kelly's Corner Committee that's been meeting, and I'd like to know about that.
I don't believe there's a Super Kelly's Corner Committee, unless there's a staff committee.
Staff committee? I don't really know.
There is no Super Kelly's Corner Committee, other than the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, which will be meeting next Tuesday, October 9th, at 7:30 in this room.
Thank you. People have been talking about this staff meeting that's happening.
There might be a staff group that meets on Kelly's Corner, but it's not a town committee.
I like the name you're suggesting, the Super Committee. But we do, once this was stated board goal for this year, to pursue the infrastructure funding for the Kelly's Corner project, I convened a staff working group with various members from different departments within the organization, and we have met regularly to try to understand what we can do to help support the steering committee and the selectmen with this project.
And are there officials at that besides staff, or is that just staff?
Staff.
Okay, great, thanks. And then I hope you do meet with members of the public, since it seems that the members of the public want something maybe a little bit different than what the steering committee needs.
There's a public committee, the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, which is meeting next Tuesday night, which is open to the public, and so members of public may attend that.
Thanks. I'm glad it's at night. Last thing, I heard that there's an Acton 2040 Committee, and that somebody's organizing that and inviting people to join and all that, so I want to hear from you guys what's really going on. Is this basically just rumor control?
I'm not on an Acton 2040 Committee, and I'm not aware of that one. Mr. Manager, do you know? No, I don't.
Feel free to email me if you have questions like this about rumor control. I'm not aware of an Acton 2040 Committee.
So none of my elected officials are participating in an Acton 4040 Committee?
Well, both are not an Acton 4040 Committee.
I don't know a new Acton 2020 Committee that's starting up to do a master plan.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else with citizens' concerns? Yes?
Yes. John Blute, Alvinbury Hill Road. I briefly mentioned in a previous meeting some of my concerns about the current status of the review of the natural gas delivery system in Acton. I continue to try to pursue this, and I know it has been reviewed by the students at Acton Boxborough High School and others. And I was told that the company is very much aware that there have been issues and problems, but I'd like and appreciate an update as to exactly where things are with that, again, vis-à-vis the incident that occurred in Lawrence, Andover, and North Andover.
Sure. Dr. Blute, as I spoke to you about, Acton is probably at the forefront of natural gas work in Massachusetts, if not in the country. We are the only town in the Commonwealth that I'm aware of that has mapped all of the natural gas leaks in our town. Most towns actually don't know where all of the natural gas leaks are, except for the ones that are identified by their natural gas provider, which are not comprehensive. We have been working with knowing having this map gives us a lot more information. So our engineering department has been working closely with our natural gas provider to try to prioritize and fix those leaks. And I would hazard guess to say that we've had a number of them fixed at a faster rate than other places because we know where they are, which is a benefit that we have, sort of a privilege, based on our privilege of being able to afford and do this study, and because we had the will to do it. There's also a number of groups in town, Mothers Out Front, that are concerned about natural gas, that have been working very hard on this issue. I work with Green Acton, Mothers Out Front, and town staff on natural gas issues, both to address the leaks in town and to reduce the rate of connections to natural gas and use of natural gas in town, trying to encourage people to convert to electricity as opposed to natural gas. So there's a lot of work that's going on in town around natural gas. If you want to know where the status of leaks are, there is a map that, again, was worked on through the study that we, as a town, funded, and that we worked with students at Acton Boxborough Regional High School to then put online. They have a physical map and an interactive online map, and they update that when we are aware of any gas leaks that are fixed. So that is an up-to-date map that is available online.
So the percentage of identified problems/leaks, and those that have been resolved, is what percentage?
I don't have a percentage. You'd have to give a timeframe of from when they were identified to when they were resolved. I mean, it's an ongoing issue, right? And we also know that there are often new leaks after, you know. So it's an ongoing issue that we continue to work on. It's not something that will be resolved overnight. It's also not something that frankly is going to be resolved at the town level. There's also state legislation that has been going on related to natural gas as well, to try to require fixing leaks. They have to fix them if they're at a certain, they rate them to be at certain levels. So there's a lot of efforts, but there's not one number that I can give you about that. But I will say, again, that we are probably doing more than a majority of communities in the Commonwealth related to natural gas.
Is there someone or some entity in the area that you've discussed that might be able to answer that question?
The percentage question? No. I don't think, again, you'd have to give a timeframe. That's not an answer. You can't say, I mean, identified since when and fixed since when. It's not a, hold on. Yes, no, you don't control the meeting. I get to, so.
Sorry.
What is your question?
Yeah, I don't have an answer to your question, but the person who I would reach out to is Kate Crosby.
So, John, hold it, because Kate is part of the group that I work with, again. So it actually would be more helpful to go to me, probably, if you have questions on this, and I can connect you with people in town that are working on these issues. But no, nobody's going to be able to say to you. You'd have to give a more specific timeframe of when you want to know from when to when what percent of gas leaks have been fixed versus what we know is there.
And vis-à-vis when these efforts were initiated and when problems are recognized, are they able to assess a level of concern, especially vis-à-vis the type of event that we saw recently occur?
Level of concern among whom?
About risk of significant problems.
Whose concern? Whose level of concern?
The citizens of this town.
Do I know the level of concern among residents without doing a survey of residents? No.
I'm thinking more from a scientific standpoint. If you could step back and look at, say, what is the level of concern at this point now, vis-à-vis the efforts that have been ongoing with the gas company, being looked at by the various entities in town? You see what I'm saying? How are we doing?
We're continuing to work on this, but again, my point is that it's not something that you can come back in two weeks and ask me how many more gas leaks have fixed. The answer is probably going to be none. This is an ongoing, long-term effort, and there are a number of groups. So if you're interested in this issue, what I'm saying is that I would encourage you to get involved in those groups, including Green Acton and Mothers Out Front, are two organizations in Acton that are very active around natural gas and natural gas leaks. Mothers Out Front, in particular, that is what they are focused on.
Then, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Citizens' concerns. Great. Okay, we will do the chairman's update and operational update. So, speaking of natural gas, the sustainability policy, the latest draft of sustainability policy is still on the town's website for review, and there's a form on the website, again, where you can submit comments that you have on that policy. We'll be discussing the next draft of that at our October 15th meeting, and I'm hopeful, depending on the level of comments that we have, that we might be able to vote a draft. I also want to give a huge thank to our town manager, John Manjirati, and to all the town staff for very quickly organizing, putting together, and getting out a lottery for the car parking, commuter parking spots on Maple Street that we changed at our last meeting from a carpool to paid spots. This was a very quick timeframe in which they had to do that, and they put that together very quickly, and my understanding is, applications were due today, and the lottery would be today as well. So we're excited to have those spots opening up shortly, and thank you to John and the staff for turning that around so quickly. If you've not yet gotten your flu shot, I got mine at the Senior Center of Human Services facility, one year anniversary the other week, but if you've not gotten your flu shot yet, you can get their flu, the Acton Nursing Services is holding flu clinics today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, from 3:15 to 6:30 at the Acton Boxborough Regional High School. There's a coffee with a cop event this Wednesday from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. in the morning at the Dunkin' Donuts, or I guess now just Dunkin', on Great Road. The League of Women Voters in the Acton area is holding a candidates forum for candidates running for the 14th Middlesex State Representative Seat, the 37th Middlesex State Representative Seat, and the Middlesex and Worcester State Senate Seat on Thursday, October 18th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. in this room. And as a reminder to everybody, all town offices, including the library, but excluding, obviously, public safety, will be closed on Monday for Columbus Day, also known as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. As you mentioned, the Human Services and Senior Center Open House was last week, or September 20th, and it was a great success. We had hundreds of people, a lot of people, maybe hundreds of people, from the community, and a great contribution from many staff members. A lot of information was shared, and some friendships formed. So thank you for everyone that helped out with that. Also, just to follow up on the carpool lot, which is now a reserved parking lot on Maple Street, at the last meeting, the board voted to change that lot to reserved parking as of October 1st, which is today. Our Public Works, Police, and Finance staff worked very hard to implement the program. We had 48 applications that were submitted, and the lottery was held today at 4:00 in public, and we had 25 people that were selected, and they will be parking as soon as tomorrow in that lot. And the spots will expire in August, where we'll have another lottery after we've had some time in that space. There was a great team effort to do this, but I want to specially mention Assistant Collector Teresa O'Leary. She did a great job, and she took a leadership role, which we really appreciate. One other note is the fire department's 125th anniversary, which will be a parade in an open house, is October 13th, which is a Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So I hope you can attend. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. First up on our agenda is the introduction of the Acton Boxborough Regional School District Superintendent Peter Light. So Peter, thank you so much for coming tonight, and I think you're just here to introduce yourself, and we appreciate you coming.
I am. So first, thank you very much, and I'll just give you a couple moments of my background. Coming to Acton Boxborough, this is my first year as a superintendent of schools. Prior to coming here, I was in Franklin for the last 21 years of my career, and a couple highlights there. I served most recently as the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and then for about eight or nine years previously as the high school principal. A little bit about my background as well. I'm a former music educator and professional musician. I was a trumpet player. People asked me that, so I figured I'd give you that information up front. It's been a wonderful career so far. I'm just thrilled to be here and learning more about the Acton Boxborough School, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you so much for coming. Are there any questions from members of the board for Dr. Light? I think you've met with most of us already, so thank you for taking time out to do that, and I just want to say his liaison to the school committee. I've really enjoyed watching you these past few months, chairing those meetings, or not chairing, but being at those meetings. I think you've done a wonderful job, and I can really tell that you've jumped in headfirst on a lot of important issues in town and seem to be doing great. So congratulations, and welcome to our community. John?
Welcome aboard.
And I understand that one of the elementary schools has a band among staff, so I don't know if you're now, you know, have to join that as a former music teacher or not, but good. All right. Ms. Manager?
I just want to say that I've had the pleasure of working closely with Superintendent Light during our first few months here. It's been, he has a great vision for the school district, and he's really shown a lot of interest in the things that we're working on in the town, and we really appreciate that. So just thank you for being here, and thank you for being a partner, and look forward to working with you.
All right. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
I apologize for not staying longer. I have enough to meet you.
No, that's no problem at all. Thank you very much. I also meant to note before that, as a reminder, that our meetings are taped, and they are now also available on the Acton TV's Facebook page to stream live. So if you would like to view them on Facebook, that is one option. You can see us there. So it's a little before our next hearing, so I'm going to do the consent agenda. I will read through these. Please say hold if you have anything that you would like to hold. All right. Item number six, meeting minutes of May 7th, 2018. Item number seven, right-of-way street cut permits. Item number eight, request for spending approval of housing gift funds, 446 Massachusetts Ave, Acton Community Housing Corporation. Item number nine, committee appointments, Xana Gruber and Dale Chea as full members of the Land Stewardship Committee. Item 10, committee appointment, Judith Romatelli, full member, Acton Boxborough Cultural Council, term to expire June 30th, 2021.
I'd like to hold and then just have us pass over, because I haven't, she's, that's my liaison assignment, and I haven't had a chance to talk to her.
Oh, sure.
Tried to reach out, and I haven't heard her back yet.
Okay, no problem. Number 11, multiple one-day alcoholic beverage licenses, Theater 3. Number 12, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Congregation Beth Elheem, October 14th, 2018. Item number 13, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Kevin and Patricia Connolly, Nagog Woods Clubhouse, October 13th, 2018. Item number 14, waiver fee request, Recreation Department. Item number 15, accept gift veteran services, a gift totaling $5,000 from John Lockery to be used to assist Acton veterans and surviving spouses of veterans. And item number 16, request to dispose of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library. Okay, hearing, nothing else? Hold. We have a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda items 6 through 9 and 11 through 16.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any objections? Okay. Great. We're not quite there yet. All right, well, I'm just going to start this 720 hearing, and we will just have you guys get set up. So this is, I don't have a notice. It's, we didn't need a notice. Okay, great. For Powder Mill Place, the 40B Lip for Powder Mill Road, so the applicant would like to come forward.
Hi, good evening. My name is Louis Levine. I am representing the applicant, the apartments at Powder Mill Place LLC. With me tonight is Joel Kahn. I'm just going to make some brief remarks about the background and the history, and Joel will, in a few minutes, just explain the project, the details of the project to you. We appreciate the board's entertaining what's called a Lip application. Lip application is known as a quote "friendly 40B." I detest that language, because I don't think any permit that anybody asks for should be deemed as the converse, the unfriendly something or other. It's a local initiative program through the Department of Housing and Community Development. You have a copy of the application in front of you. I think, as the board may be aware, because some of you have attended meetings or are aware of them, we have been, last year or so, working with both Acton and Maynard. This project is both in Acton and Maynard, so it creates additional challenges for permitting, because we're dealing with two towns. I would parenthetically say that 40Bs, larger 40Bs, have become very typical at town lines. There's a reason for that. So by way of example, the Muse in Concord is at the Acton-Sudbury Concord Town Line. It's in Concord. Avalon in Acton is also in Westford, so it is, in to some degree, it's not at a town line, but a portion of that project is in the town of Westford. I represented the applicants. When they did their project, there were challenges, because you were dealing with two towns. Right down across the wall from Avalon is the villages of Littleton. That's right at the Littleton Acton Town Line. In fact, one of the property boundaries for that project is the Acton Town Line. Paddocks, which is in Boxborough at 495, is virtually at the Harvard Town Line. So there's a reason for that, and I could give other examples in other communities. I think one of the main reasons is, and those are all larger apartment complexes, and the reason is, by definition, no one wants a larger apartment complex in the town center or in neighborhoods, which tend to morph off the town center. Town lines also tend to be kind of never-neverlands. You have, because we're a home-rule state, you know, we have the zoning in Town A and the zoning in Town B, and usually the zoning in Town A has necessarily not the same attributes as zoning in Town B. So that's a reason why these projects have wound up in town lines. This is, again, a project. It's 254 units. About a third of the units are in Maynard, 74. About two-thirds, 180, rather, are in Acton. It's a 12-point acre site, but I'm not going to go into details of the project, because Joel's going to do that. Like the other town line projects, it's located on a major arterial, Route 62. Muse is located off of 62. The Avalon and Littleton projects are located off of 2A119 and 111 for the project in Boxborough. That's, again, part of, I think, the standard operating procedure. I used to tell people, if you wanted to find the town center, you'd look for the church, and if you wanted to find the town line, you'd look for the dump. Well, now I tell people, if you want to find the town line, you look for the large 40B project. I believe, and you all have a familiarity, I'm sure, with the area, this is an appropriate place for a larger 40B project, an apartment project. It's on a major arterial. It's near the town of Maynard Shopping, and it's also near Shopping Center in Acton. The train is relatively close. I think it would also support Maynard's downtown situation. We have been discussing this project for the last year with both Maynard and Acton. With respect to Acton, about a year ago, we had a large meeting with Acton and Maynard in this very room. We had the superintendents from both towns here, school superintendents. We had staff from both towns. We had town manager and administrator from Maynard. And we initially described the project to both towns. With respect to Maynard, in the last year, Joel has been meeting somewhat regularly over the last year with the subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen, discussing the project's attributes, Maynard's concerns, and things like that. We've had two large meetings, public meetings in Maynard, one in November of last year at their library, one more recently at their high school, where the public had comments. We've also done a lot of peer review that Maynard has asked us to do relative to traffic and other things like that. At the same time, we've met with Acton, met with their staff, met with the ACHC. ACHC had a public meeting. We discussed various issues with town staff, and that kind of brings us where we are tonight. I understand the challenges of two towns. I mean, it's tough enough to get a permit from a town, let alone two towns, but I believe, I'm confident, that it can happen, and it will happen, in a friendly, congenial, cooperative way. I know that Mr. Manjirati has reached out to the town administrator in Maynard, just to keep him on the same page, or to find out where Maynard is at. Maynard is going to be where they are, and Acton's going to be where they are. The major issue going in about a year ago was sewer. You're not going to build a large, complex, septic in any community. Initially, we believed that Acton did not have the capacity in their sewer system for sewer, and so for most of the last year, we've been pursuing Maynard to provide sewer for the entire project. Recently, in speaking to Paul Campbell and getting ideas of where you actually stood on your sewer, we came to the realization that Acton does have the capacity to provide sewer for this project. We understand that that would be an issue, and so what we proposed, and we've engaged Ty and Bond, which they're kind of like Weston and Sampson. They primarily do sewer work. Paul and Tom are familiar with them as consultants. What we're proposing as part of the project is that we would construct, at the applicant's expense, holding tank on the sewer treatment plant facility. Now, in general terms, the capacity or the permit that Acton has for sewer discharge is, I think, 299,000 gallons. If I'm off by a gallon or two, Paul can correct me, but I don't think it's significant. Acton's daily flow, on average, is somewhere around 150,000 or 60,000 gallons, but their peak flows, which typically, what I understand from Paul and Ty and Bond, are connected with rain events, can be 220,000, 230,000 gallons a day. I think you have a memo from the engineering department that indicates, therefore, if you take the 230 from your 299, it gives you your available present capacity of 65,000. So we're dealing with peak events, not ordinary events, but that's the way DEP looks at it, at the peak event. So to help the town and to make this project a better project, and also to provide a substantial benefit to the town beyond the project, we're proposing holding tanks. The holding tanks would be, I think, anywhere from 60,000 to 100,000 gallons a day. They would be built at the applicant's expense at the treatment facility, your treatment facility. And what they would do would be allow the town, the sewer district, to coordinate when there is a peak event to hole the sewers. So these tanks are way greater than we're using, and so it will allow you to bring on additional users beyond which you presently could. So in other words, we're increasing the capacity of the system without having to go and increase the fields, make a capital expense. So by way of example, the 60,000 to 100,000 gallons of holding capacity would provide for your schools, if you wanted, you know, another large user, because you would be able to retain it during peak events and keep your flows down, as opposed to, in peak events, they would just morph up, and then DEP would say you couldn't go any higher. So we've given a preliminary, and I think you have that in your packet, from Ty and Bond to Engineering Department. Engineering Department has, again, reviewed it preliminarily. I understand devils are in the details in terms of design, but I would strongly suggest and believe that the holding tanks is a tremendous advantage to the town of Acton way beyond this project. It's basically going to increase your average daily flows by the size of the holding tank, which is at least a 20% increase. If you 60,000 gallons, you're at 300,000 gallons, so now you're basically up to 360,000 gallons, and you haven't spent any money and time to do it. With respect to the project, lastly, it's 254 units. It's rental project, so under the DHCD state guidelines, if it's a rental project, you get 100% of the units against your subsidized housing inventory. In an ownership project, you only get the affordable units. In an ownership project, you only get the affordable units. So this would add to your affordable inventory, 180 units. Right now, Acton is about 280 units short of reaching 10%. This project would give you 180. I understand Avalon Bay is proposing a project of about 86 units. So those two projects together, which are both rental projects, would bring you about 14 short of reaching 10%. It's somewhat of a moving target because the census will change in 2020, the unit count will go up, but there's also other units, affordable units, that have not yet been counted. So you'll be pretty close. This project alone will bring you to about 9%, and the Avalon would bring you almost to 10%. Either way, you will have, if you wish, a two-year safe harbor provision. You have housing, Acton has a housing production plant, and a number of units in this project and/or Avalon would give you two years of safe harbor. What that means is that you can take a 40B application if you want, if you like it, but if you think it's not such a great application, you have the right to reject it, and that's the way it is. So it puts a town in a better position. Acton has had a history with 40Bs to promote smaller 40Bs. I guess, and I think that's probably a good idea, they're kind of infold, a less objectionable. But the only way you're going to get up to 10% is through a larger rental complex. Before Avalon was built, you were around 3%. After Avalon got built, you went to about 6%, 6.5%, which it's kind of stayed at in that interim period. So it's the rental projects that really move up the numbers, a large rental project. I'm going to let Joel go through the details. I think this is a very appropriately located project. I think it could be a benefit to both Maynard and Acton, and I'd like Joel just to go through the nuts and bolts of the project.
If you'd any favor, just draw it up with your hand. I'm going to show a line for one second, then flip it back to the front page, and I'll be done. That one to the right. Just stand there for one second. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Members of the Board. My name is Joel Kahn. I'm with a company called Equity Alliance up in Bedford, New Hampshire, and one of the things that my company does is provide development consulting to people who are bringing forth projects. I've actually been in front of this town before. I was one of the consultants involved in even the Avalon project. It seems like a very, very long time ago. Couple of years ago, I told my wife I was going to get out of the entitlement business so I could be home at night, and then this guy Lou Levine calls me and says, "I got a project for you, and it's going to involve two town lines." And doing that, he really topped it because this particular case, as you'll see in the design, the town line just doesn't separate buildings. The town line runs in, right in the middle of two different buildings. So the first thing I'd like Lou just to point to for one second is the town line that separates the difference between Acton and Maynard. Acton is comprised of 2, 4, 12, 18 Powder Mill Road. It is currently in the Powder Mill District by zoning. Generally, as you all familiar with it, it's containing today a series of old commercial buildings, mill kind of buildings, concrete structures that literally go right up to the edge of the river. And if Lou just flip back to the other page, and then you could sit down. And the only reason I want him to point to that is, is that when you start to see the plan and discuss sort of some of the factors about it, you'll get a better idea and understanding of what portion is in Acton and the other portion being in Maynard. Yes, you may. Thank you very much. You know, Lou made my night really easy tonight because he's gone through a lot of the things that normally I would do as part of my presentation, but let me give you some of the facts to make sure you understand what the, it's part of the packet that was presented to you. The total acreage of the site is 12.65 acres, of which 10.47 of it reside in Acton and a balance in Maynard. As a result of that, this ends up being a 180-unit project comprised of the following: 52 units, one-bedroom units at our market rate, 17 that are affordable, 67 that are two-bedroom markets, and 23 that are deemed affordable. And there are 16 three-bedroom units that are market and five that are affordable. And affordable here follows the 40B standard of using 80% of the area medium household income, and therefore, we've set aside as part of this 25% of the units to be deemed The parking that would be provided, and again, it's, you know, I got it sometimes I'm going to jump back and forth and think the whole project, and other times I'll make sure I'm very particular to the issue that's been presented from you. The site will end up providing 1.75 spaces per unit in parking, and that'll be both surface parking, the majority of it, but there'll be 40 to 44 units underneath each parking for enclosed spaces. And I point that out because it's very hard to have a line. The project as proposed will be, we're proposing for the Acton portion to be serviced by Acton Sewer and Acton water to be provided. Boy, it's been a long time ago, but over a year ago, Lou and friend went in front to discuss Acton water, and at the time, they indicated availability and the ability to support this project as proposed. This is proposed as a first A-class department, and what I mean by that, because it's a term you often hear about it, is that we are definitely gearing ourselves to renter by choice, not renter by necessity. And for that, we have a lot of amenities. There'll be approximately 4,000 square foot clubhouse. It'll contain a fitness center, maybe an aerobic studio, a 24-hour parcel pickup, a great room. Outside of that, there'll be barbecues, there'll be an outdoor TV, there'll be a pool, there'll be a fire pit. And each unit, again, they're all elevated buildings. The site is composed of four of them, of which two and a three-quarters of them, I guess you'd say, are in Acton and the balance being in Maynard. These are buildings, all have nine-foot ceilings in each of the units. They're all with walk-in closets in just about every bedroom. Bathrooms will have dual vanities in the master, and they will be fully appointed with all appliances, including washer and dryer in each unit. Now, one of the questions that was asked, or at least I asked very early on, was, well, what, how do you determine where a kid goes to school if, in fact, the town line runs through a meeting, a middle of a unit? And believe it or not, DHCD had an answer for me, and they said it was in their regulations that would deem that would be where the majority of the square footage of the master bed, of the master bedroom lies. So an architect must proclaim before a building's structure where the master bedrooms are, if there's a calculation done, and where that line falls determines whether or not a child living in a second bedroom might go to school in Acton or versus Maynard. As Lou said, that the idea, recently, and what we've been exploring with Paul, is the idea of using horizontal directional drilling. There's a term I had to come to terms with as well, which is that we are going to burrow away underneath the river as proposed to a holding tank on the other side. We will have, in essence, a lift station that will take our sewage and then pump it across to a holding tank, and then the Acton Sewer Department can then decide at what times and what days that the flow can be handled through the processor or when that should be held for peak events. We also, because of these will be tall buildings, they will have generators for the elevator, and they'll be fully sprinkled. These buildings, you know, will obviously create a tremendous tax benefits to the individual municipality. I've taken some rough numbers today and have calculated, based on approximately $30 million of construction, plus or minus, in the town of Acuulon, will generate over $500,000 of new tax revenue. So over the last year, while I've been spending a lot of time hanging in Maynard and now ready to come and spend a lot of time with you folks as well, too, one of the things that they wanted to do early on was to do traffic study. So we hired a company GS, I'm sorry, a GPI, and GPI did a traffic study. They then had VHB do peer review on it. And while I have no doubt that as we would come forward and go through the process of the board, of the zoning board, they're going to want to see different traffic studies, but the point is, we did do one to determine whether or not the roads connecting right in front of the site and within distance of the site could support the project. And there was extensive back and forth, and the bottom line analysis to it is that there would be no degradation of service in any of the turning movements coming in and out of the site according to the study and the peer review. And there was one turning movement that is the only one that they had slight concern about, and that is the left-hand turn lane out of Wendy's, which is located across the site. There was a suggestion at the time that, as you see right now, along Powder Mill, we have two access points into the property, that in fact, the one on the Acton side be pulled further to the, I guess that would be to the north. And so we've taken that under advisement, and as we, again, work through the process, we would expect to have some further discussions with the town of Acton regarding the traffic studies and what other additional studies they may want. In the end, because it's a singular large project, there are parts of the infrastructure that would obviously be in both towns, such as the draining system. We're proposing use a chambered system underneath the parking lots. Obviously, that you can't really separate it to what is the flows that would be generated in one town versus the other. And so we expect that as we go through the process, that the appropriate town offices and public works departments will meet to review and make sure that, in fact, that the systems proposed will be functional, meet the needs of not just one, but both municipalities. One of the concerns, of course, and I remember going through the experience when we dealt with the Acton, the Avalon project, was the issue about fire and ambulance response. And one of the concerns at the time was, is that Westford, I mean, you had to go from Westford to Littleton, back to Acton, back in, and would that be of concern? And there was much discussion about it, and the end, that Acton felt that they could service, even if they had to the units, if they were the first responders on the Westford side. Well, to that end, too, and while, you know, there's only a mild difference between where the closest fire station is to the property, either in Maynard or Acton, we did spend a great deal of time with Chief Stowers and Chief Dubois over in Maynard. And as part of our discussions, their ultimate statement was, in the end, was that they felt that while there was a chance that often they'd be the first responders to a call, that they felt that they could handle it. Their only concern was regarding their ambulance, and we have had further discussions whether, in fact, we can assist them regarding that particular concern of theirs. Just like to make a couple other sort of points and then open us up for questions and answers. As Lou indicated, on August 8th, we met with the various department heads here in the town. This was sort of the second meeting. The first time was a really group meeting a long, long time ago, and then more recently to review this project. We look forward to continuing our effort to work with the town through the project, and there was no tremendous issues raised during that meeting, other than, of course, the questions of its final design and to ensure that, in fact, it was properly reviewed by both municipalities. We intend to promote this, you know, to make a green solution here. We do like the fact that the crosstown connect has been servicing other communities in the area. It's our intention to further those discussions to see if this project was to be developed, and in fact, that they would also provide that as a solution to help cut down on traffic. As Lou indicated, this would provide 180 units of additional housing towards your affordable housing count, of which 45 units would be affordable at 80% of the area medium household income. Currently, for anybody who's been up there, this is a pretty mishmash of old buildings that are situated right now currently along the river. One of the things that will happen as a result of this, based on our plan, is that we will pull and demolish all those and to create a 100-foot buffer against the river. The river being an important resource for both towns, and it's our goal to put, to construct public trails and to allow access to the public to that. And while it may be in itself along our frontage only part of the solution, we do the idea of supporting the use of this precious resource, and we believe that by the time that this project would be developed, it would be great improvement to the particular riverfront today by pulling and removing these structures. The buildings would meet Massachusetts stretch codes, so that in itself would result in a 15% energy increase, and as I indicated, that it has an important taxable benefit to the community. And finally, you know, the untangible, the X factor, which is you bring in what is all told 254 households to the area, and what do they bring? Well, they bring diversity, they bring new shoppers, they bring, you know, new energy to a community, and we think that, in fact, that that's a benefit that will in part help Acton, but even more so help Maynard due to its proximity to its downtown area. We look forward to working with the town. I know that the LIP application that's in front of you was rather lengthy because I, in fact, decided to include information on, as it related to both towns on the same application. I thought it very important that there be transparency and that you had full knowledge of what was being proposed in Maynard, as Maynard had full knowledge of what was being proposed in Acton. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Lou and Joel, for coming tonight. Are there any questions from members of the board? Janet?
Lou, it was a year and a half ago when that big meeting happened in this room, because I was, I was there. I have, I have my notes. I keep, I keep everything when projects aren't going, so it's been, and then I went to the meeting in August, and I feel, I don't want to belabor questions because I think some of my colleagues probably haven't had the same opportunity I've had to hear the presentation. The handling of wastewater is something that is fairly new. I, it was in our packet. I need to kind of understand it a little bit better because I know, from what I understand of our wastewater treatment plant, we have 299,000 gallons per day capacity, and we could have 500,000, but are, we're limited by the absorption beds, and so it's looking for a place for more absorption beds that would be key to our expanding capacity. I don't know, I don't understand what these holding tanks, they hold the stuff until it can be, go someplace else, and what if it can't go someplace else? Do they have to be pumped out? You know, I need, I guess that's, we don't need to belabor the details. I just need to feel more comfortable with that and then with the drilling under the AsaBET and some of that.
Let me first explain the issue. It's that what happens is, you're right, you have two issues that limit you. One is your beds, and the other one is that the plant is licensed at a certain capacity. And what dictates whether or not you've reached that capacity is a historical view of what happens at certain peak flows. Peak flows typically when there's, we'll call it a 25-year flood as an example, where there's a lot of water that's into it, there's some minor infiltration, you have a relatively new system, and what happens during no time is you hit a peak. And that peak then to the state becomes a limiting factor. And so the peaks are very short in its duration. They've happened four, five, six times over the last X amount of years. And so the holding tank concept is a way in which, when those peak events occur, that in fact, that the flows that were current, not just from this project, but from any other project who might want to benefit from this type of proposed system, would allow the plant to be able to say, "Listen, we got an event going on here. We want to cut down on the flow into the treatment facility so we do not exceed its capacity at that moment, and so now we can hold it in this reserve." And then at such time, then that event goes away, that in fact, then the plant, which has all the capacity today to do so, and you're really not, if you took at the peak events, getting anywhere near to that today, would then be able to be able to handle it as part of its normal processing. So it's sort of like a safety net, in a way, to help you during those particular events. And it was a great idea that Ian Calo, our consultant, when he came up with it, and as we explored it with Paul, it opens up sort of an open discussion about how else the town could benefit from that same concept if applied elsewhere.
When we received the data on the capacity, we received the engineering department, it was approximately 65,000 gallons of capacity. Out of that, Paul said there was a reservation for, I think, West Acton, so he took out 25,000 gallons. So there's still enough capacity in the plant to service this project without the holding tanks. Joel and I said, "Let's engage Ty and Bonn, their sewer consultants. Ian is familiar with them. You know, they're essentially the same thing as Weston and Sampson." And we said, "How could we make this even better for the town?" And so that's where this holding tank idea came up. It's not necessary for this project. It's not necessary for this project, but it is a tremendous benefit because you mentioned, Janet, as well, about testing your fields and seeing if they have additional capacity and going through that, which you can. The issues with that are number one, the testing. And doing the testing, the expense of the testing, the geology and hydrology, you know, thereafter, submitting an application to DEP and see if they will allow your fields to be increased from this 299 to a higher number, I think Paul used 500,000. And the reason Paul used 500,000 is because your plant is generally fitted up for 500,000. So the physical plant can, can, can provide for 500,000 gallons, your fields can only provide for about 300. So if you want to increase the capacity, you have to increase the field, except for our holding tank idea. The holding tank idea effectively increases the capacity of Acton sewer system, not this project, by the, the amount of the holding tank. So we're basically putting on, you know, mud flaps, you know, and doling up the car, but the reality is, is that if we have a 100,000 gallon holding tank, Acton effectively has 100,000 gallons more of sewer capacity, which again, in the peak events, which are rare, but they occur, and they're short-lived. You know, so you typically, when you look at the graph, it's fairly flat at this 150-ish thousand number, except for the peak events. So these holding tanks are not really addressed only for us, in fact, not even materially for us. They really would be taking sewage from your entire system and holding it for a day or two or three, and then putting it into your plant when the peak event had dissipated.
Yeah, I appreciate you're going into detail. I don't want, at this point, at this stage, I don't want, I just want to assume the, I like, you know, the project, I like the idea, I like the location, obviously. It's less controversial than some other 40B projects that we've been dealing with recently. And it's nice to think that maybe we could reach the safe harbor two-year period where we'd have the option of deciding which 40B projects we wanted to accept or not to accept. I have a question, because originally, Acton Water District was supposed to provide the water for the Acton and Maynard, and, and the deal was, Maynard was supposed to take the sewage for, for both towns. And, and I got, I know that there's been an issue with Maynard. I don't know if now we're looking at having Acton cover, provide its own wastewater treatment for its units, and then is Maynard going to provide wastewater treatment for its units? Is that, that's the deal?
That's correct, and we're assuming that Maynard will also provide water for its portion of the project.
Okay, so Water District would just be providing water for the Acton units?
Correct.
Okay.
The agreement we made with the Water District was they would provide water for Maynard if Maynard provided sewer for Acton. So at this point, you know, that deal is in fairness to the Water District, off the table.
Okay.
So we would just be going to the Water District to provide Acton with Acton water.
For Acton units, okay.
And Maynard would provide water and sewer for their part of the project.
That's good, because I, I think I was talking with somebody at the Water District, and they mentioned that, well, if Maynard is not going to provide wastewater service for the Acton units, then the Water District's deal to provide water for both, the entire development would be, have to be revisited, so. And, yeah, I think, I think, I've read something in one of the things that documents, the only thing I have a question about is, I know that there are two historical houses that are in Maynard that you have agreed to move someplace. We've gotten some emails and memos about suggestions of what to do with historical buildings, including the ones that are in Maynard. But there is this brick building, and I, I don't know if it's historically significant or there was, it's not the warehouse, but there's another building. I, I haven't really, I, you can't see much from the street, but I didn't know if.
We'll have to arrange to, to go on site with the party to express it because I'm sure I understand what the historical base yard. I did have a meeting with the Maynard Historical Group where we did in fact, walk those two buildings. One of them is, of the two houses in question, one of them's in reasonable shape. The other one, I was concerned when two people went upstairs to the second floor at the same time, that you could see the floor started to bend. So I questioned at the time whether or not in fact, that was necessarily the best use of capital, but at the moment, the agreement in principle is that we relocate those houses and we have a spot carved out in the front left corner where they would go. Its usage to be identified, whether or not they would use it in some fashion, whether or not one of them would come, or both become rentals, we don't know yet.
Generally, I like the fact that you're taking a site that, that has, I think you're reducing, I don't know how it's possible, but you're reducing impervious.
We are.
And you're also pulling a lot of structure away from the riverfront. You know, the river is something that everybody's been trying to clean up. It was kind of in bad shape for a while, and I think that people like seeing, you know, water views, so it would be great to have a little, honor the buffer and then also make a walk that would be perhaps available to not just the residents, but to people who are going along from, from somewhere else. And I, I want to give my colleagues a chance to ask some questions. It's really the wastewater treatment and then the sort of the trade-off searing water service that I was curious about, so.
And there's no doubt there'll have to be more discussions on it. There was just a lot of memos flying around of recent and that certainly, you know, having the Acton Sewer Department look at this and further and have further discussions is certainly well in order.
Thank you.
Okay, Janet, Peter?
Yeah, one of the things I'm seeing in the engineering department's memo is an evaluation of whether it would be better to just go the sewer line to the pump station down by Powder Mill Plate, the shopping center. And that would allow the properties along Route 62 to connect up, so that would be a benefit to the town as well. So you're going to be asked to look at that as a possible.
We understand that, and then we're prepared to sit down and to explore that, yes.
Okay. Have you seen this memo from the Regional Housing Services Office?
I have.
There's an issue about the rents. Apparently, they think the rents are too high for Section 8 because of the way MHCD calculates rents versus mass housing. It could be an obstacle to tenants and management companies. Second, Section 8 voucher administrators have the option of paying 110% to the FMR. Have you looked at that at all?
I saw the comment, and certainly there was a couple corrections that we'll, you know, get into the LIP application. But, you know, ultimately, and DHCD sets the rates that are deemed to be affordable, and that is a rent that includes, if you much deduct it out, if you're the landlord, if the tenant's paying for their own sewer and water or whatever else, you need to deduct that to in fact, derive and ultimately to the net rent. So whatever the DHCD rent numbers are set are, is what we're going to be striving, based on an 80% median household income. But this is not necessarily geared to necessarily be just for Section 8 folks. It's just, it's one option that we'll explore at the time.
Okay. In our experience, generally 20 to 25% of the tenants use Section 8 in these, in these developments, so.
We're aware of that statistic as well, too. I've, I've had other projects, I oversee as asset manager, sometimes it's true, and it depends where, there's a lot of factors that go into that, just that.
Okay. They also had a comment about the accessible units and some little difference, I guess, in various.
The entire building would be elevator, the entire building, the entire building is elevator, so it's accessible to all units in the building. In addition to that, there'll be the appropriate number of handicap designed units as well. So both will be incorporated into the final design.
Yeah, they have a, they have a comment here, the town may wish to request the affordable ADA units not be greater than 25% of the total ADA unit, so I'm not sure exactly.
That's how we're, that's how we're laying it out. There's a provision in the law to say that they all have to be treated the same. I can't, you know, put somebody in all the bad units, I have to properly disperse them and all the other things. The answer is that's a practice in which we'll follow as this process continues, so that there is no loading and make affordable units ADA units. No, it'll be spread out accordingly. 25% of the ADA units will be affordable, the rest of them will be marketed.
Okay, because the handicap population is a different population than the low-income population. In fact, there's a comment from the, from the planning department that you can design units that can be easily converted to handicapped accessible units without too many changes, I guess. I don't know if that might be a solution to.
We've, we've looked into that, or I've looked into that, other projects, and what we've ended up, you know, what we ended up concluding in the end, what's most important is that proper blocking be done. If in fact, a unit needs to be converted to some ADA type of unit, as long as the blocking's in the wall to do so, you know, cabinets and counters come in and out and get moved around, it's not that difficult to do. Where the problem I think lies for developers in the past is if it, if it wasn't designed for that, didn't allow for that particular type of conversion, then they had trouble because of the way in which you have to bracket and support and you have to leave the space underneath available. But these units will, will, will be able to be converted if that situation arises.
Okay, thank you. Also, you, you talked about the traffic study. I don't know, there's, there's a comment here from the engineering department about coordinating the traffic study with the prior traffic study that we did for the development up on Sudbury Road. Have you completed a traffic study since this memo came out? This is dated August 30th, so.
No, we have not. We have waited to first obviously come and move the process forward. We understand that, certainly it's, it's, it's an issue that will have to be worked out as we continue on. But no, we have, we've only gone through a traffic study and based on Maynard's requirements at the time and peer review of that. We've yet to sit down and get from Acton its parameters to make sure in fact, what type of study would need to be done, and of course, we'll go through, I'm sure, appropriate peer review here as well.
Okay, go ahead. Board of Appeals regulations would require a traffic study for a project this size. So we've been holding off, like Joel says, before we make our Board of Appeals application, which will require a traffic study, to sit down with town staff and to confirm with them what the parameters of that traffic study would be. And one of the parameters is just geographic, how many intersections are we going down? Are we going to West Concord? Are we going to go to Cambridge? You know, where does the traffic study, you know, cut off? So we would sit down with staff, and it's in our interest and it's the town's interest. Like I said, this process should always be friendly, you know, irrespective of the resolution or the outcome. And so we're going to go to staff before we do a traffic study and say, what do you want? And, and bring in our traffic consultant at the time to get that out of the way. What I'm not ever going to do in any project, including this one, is just to hand the traffic study that we did on our own and say, here it is, what do you think about it? It's a colossal waste of time for the town and us. So we're going to have it semi-peer reviewed before we even do it, Peter.
Okay, because what I heard, the comment I heard was you had hired a consultant and there was, I thought you had done a study, there was no increase in traffic that would affect Route 62, I guess, so that's just your preliminary planning.
No, what I indicated was is that Maynard, in its discussions over the last year, requested that as part of that, they wanted to evaluate the impact along the frontage. And for that, we did a study that said that in fact, we did not impact the turning movements or the intersection that surrounded the site. And so it was again, their criteria at the time, what they asked us to go do, and we had our engineer work with their engineer to in fact, complete such a report.
Okay. Thank you. There's also a comment in Planning's memo about complete streets policy in Acton. We certainly would encourage you to do whatever you can to connect this development with the shopping center. I don't know if it's possible to put a bike lane in there, but are there sidewalks on that side of the street? Are sidewalks on both sides of the street?
There's actually a sidewalk network that comes down.
Sorry, did I just turn in the microphone?
Can't just leave it, huh? There's a sidewalk network, my memory is it comes down from Maynard Center on our side of 62, and then crosses over to a sidewalk on the far side, runs down just about to the shopping center where the bridge is. So we have to look at that again with town staff. You know, it may be what Peter's mentioning, bike lanes for that, but it may also be crosswalks to connect from one sidewalk to the other. Again, there is some infrastructure there already, but again, we would sit down with the engineering department and planning department and see, you know, what their prerogatives are and, you know, try and accomplish it. We can't, beyond our project, you know, it's private property, but there is a sidewalk on the other side of the street. So I think we can incorporate something to get you down to the shopping center. And if you go right to Maynard, there is a sidewalk.
We have a little bit of gap, but the proposal is to extend the sidewalk to connect there as well, too.
Okay. I also think the buffer is a great idea. When we permitted the quick, quick loop and Leo Bartolome's Subaru maintenance shop there, they put a kind of a narrow path along the riverfront. I see people and waiters in there all the time, fly fishermen, people use that a lot. I don't know if there's any way to connect your, I think, what the marijuana facility will be between your, your site and Subaru dealership, but if there's any way to deal with the neighbors and connect that and extend it all the way to where the current path is, that'd be great. There's also a comment from planning about the sensitivity of the Assabet River and taking extra steps to make sure not a lot of phosphorus goes into the river in terms of fertilizers or whatever landscaping you do. We like, we like drought tolerant landscaping designs, so I'd ask you to keep that in mind. I guess I've taken enough time at this point, and thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Joan, any questions?
Yeah, how deep is the river at that point where you have the cross?
You know, you gave me a lot of, anticipating a lot of questions. I don't have the answer to that one. I'll have to find that out, to be quite honest.
And who has jurisdiction over the river?
How do we get across the river?
No, I know how we get across, but see, the question was who has jurisdiction over the river?
DEP. Horizontal. Horizontal, you know, drilling is kind of state-of-the-art now. It's going below and across, it's.
Not into the river at all?
Yeah, it's not, it's not going in the river at all. It's in the riverbed or in the bedrock. It's not, again, every time I say something, somebody says something else, but it's not a wetlands intrusion in particular. I mean, it's.
So this force main in the middle of the river is below the river?
Yes.
That's correct.
It's not a pipe, Joan, running in the, in the water body at all.
It'll be below whatever distance the party think is appropriate, and it's not also fracting.
And what's, what's the slope coming up on the other side?
We have not evaluated that yet. So there's a couple things that would need to be worked out with Paul and further discussions, where a section holding tank would be there, at what point did he'd want us to come up the bank, how we'd get it up at that point in time to that particular location. Those details haven't been discussed yet.
And this six-foot diameter pumping station, which would be at the curve there on the top, if I'm looking at this?
Well, we haven't yet designed where our lift station would be and where a holding tank would be on the other side, so anything.
But you submitted this.
I don't think we depicted and showed, I didn't, oh, I'm sorry, Ian did do that. I apologize. It was just purely for illustration purposes at this time. It had yet been worked out the details of anything. It was just to show an example of how it might go across, but we hadn't taken any further than that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan, any questions?
For Mr. Levine, please. With respect to the safe harbor, what is the event in the development process that would trigger the, the two-year safe harbor?
I believe the issuance of the comprehensive permit and so long as the building permits are obtained, I believe in a year or a year and a half, I think it's a year. But I believe the issuance of the comprehensive permit in the first instance. Okay, you have, you have, I think it's 40, 41 a year?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, thank you.
Eighty-five.
Yeah. Under your housing production plan, if you produce 42 or 85 in two years, you're in safe harbor for two years, okay?
Okay.
So this project would produce either one of those numbers upon issuance of the comprehensive permit. You then have to get building permits, it can't go stale, so is to say. Safe harbor comes back if it goes stale and then gets built.
Would, if Avalon 2 goes forward.
Same thing.
Would that be a second two-year safe harbor period?
No. It, well, again, it depends what the chronology is. If we're separated by two years, or they from us, then yeah, it would be, it would be.
I see, okay.
If we're separated by two years or they from us, then yeah, it would be, assuming these events are going to happen simultaneously or somewhat simultaneously, but you make a good point. I mean, I think Avalon is ahead in the process, so if they were to go in, they have eighty-six units, which takes care of Nancy's eighty-five, and we're later in the process, then you might be in a three-year safe harbor.
It would overlap.
It would overlap, okay, but you've met your housing production plan for maybe three years now? Possibly, yeah.
So potentially we can get in more than two years if the, if the, if the two overlap?
Well, if the two overlapped, you're almost at your ten percent, so that again is the other trigger mark too.
Okay. What would be the timeline from start to finish for Powder Mill? Construction?
What we've envisioned at this point, and it's really what complicates this, Mr. Benson, is it's a question of how it's going to work in two municipalities at the same time. But our hope is that over the next thirty-plus days, that we could get a LIP application support from two Board of Selectmen and submit them then to DHCD, who then issues a site eligibility letter. That process will take another ninety to one hundred and twenty days. Upon issuance of a site eligibility letter, we would then immediately make application to both zoning boards and begin the process. You know, I think based on my experience, that can run anywhere from four months to nine, ten months. It really depends on the particular board and the issues that are being discussed. So, and it's our hope that we would continue along that path. Once we have the comprehensive permit in hand, it's an eighteen-month construction cycle and it's about a twelve to eighteen-month lease up based on current market conditions.
Okay, so if, say if it goes all in order, the timeline from now to the issuance of the comprehensive permit would be about how long?
We expect if we were fortunate, we're going to say at the end of 2019, have both zoning boards approve this project.
Okay.
Okay? And then at that point, we would then go into an eighteen-month construction cycle, the first building coming online twelve months later.
So the end of 2019 would be the comprehensive permit?
Correct. We'd like to do it sooner, but being realistic.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. My colleagues asked a lot of my questions, so I just have a few. And just to follow up on the sewer, I think, you know, Peter brought up the suggestion of going down sixty-two, but my understanding is versus going under the river. My understanding is there that there's concerns then related to capacity. If we're going by all of those folks, then they have the ability to connect and so that impacts capacity, which could be helped with this tank that you're proposing. But then there were questions from engineering on, you know, long-term. I know you'd built the tank up front, but long-term, who's in charge of maintenance and, you know, things like that. So I think there's a lot to, as you've said, still to talk about and think through for sure, but it's an interesting proposal at the least. Have you talked to Crosstown Connect about tying into the shuttle services that they provide either in Maynard or Acton? Because I know like Maynard already has a shuttle that goes to the train station, which I'm not sure where their pickup is, but my understanding is I think it's closer to this area than Acton's currently are and it's quite popular, so...
Over a year ago, when we started very early on the process, the answer is I connected, but obviously this is taken and drawn out, so a little bit longer than we had hoped. So the answer is, is it's our expectation goal that we would want to have this project included in their service that's being provided. No question about it. We see that a lot of our residents, it'll be a mixed of different age groups that will service. There's no question about it. We expect to see a, you know, higher amount of over fifty-five with a four-elevator building and a certain amount of underground parking available. At the same time, you know, we also see young professionals who in fact, are still in the workforce and wanting to get to the train station. So it's definitely in our goals. We think it's important for the project as well.
Okay, great, yeah, no, we definitely encourage you to join that program. And then you talked about some of the green solutions that you have considered. My understanding is you are proposing to use natural gas though for heating at these? Okay. So have you considered not using natural gas? Because I think buildings like this and especially apartments are well-suited for electricity as opposed to natural gas. A, natural gas is not green and B, it's also not very safe as we've seen. So it's something that I think is for, you know, the number of units you're talking about and the size of this, something worthwhile considering and looking at. So I don't know how far you are into the design plans, but I think you're probably not far enough along in that you could still consider using air source heat pumps as opposed to natural gas connections.
I promise we'll look into it and no, we're not that far along to get that far. We have selected an architect, so in that regard, we've gotten someplace, but we've not gotten into any mechanicals yet whatsoever.
I think it's definitely something to think about and I do think, you know, with what's been going on, it's something people will be more concerned about and might be more interested in having electricity over natural gas these days. I know a lot of people prefer gas right now, but I do think that that trend will start shifting. I think most people in Lawrence would really hope that they didn't have natural gas right now, so, yeah.
I just want to make one comment and I don't...
Sorry, your mic, your mic got turned off again.
One of the reasons that we're...
It's all right, it turned off again somehow. Sometimes it's a little faulty. Uh-oh. We might have to go to the handheld mic if sometimes our plugs are not great there. Do we have more?
I got it.
Oh, there we go. Oh, nope. Yeah, why don't we go to the handheld mic?
I have one that I have to go over there.
Yeah, sorry.
I just wanted for the board, in terms of horizontal drilling as opposed to going down Route 62 and connecting up with the pump station, it's less expensive for us to go horizontal drilling. And so, but we're willing to spend probably as much or more as a difference to do these holding tanks to provide a benefit to the town. So that's really in part what I would ask the board to look at. If there are other users that on sixty-two, which I don't think there are, because I think right now it's almost entirely low-use auto dealers and, you know, have very, very little sewage flow, want to connect in in the future, you know, they, we're actually not taking away any capacity with these holding tanks, so there'll be additional things. So that's, it's not a quid pro quo, Katie, but it is a substantial amount of money and I'm sure, you know, the engineering department can give you an estimate of what it's going to cost us to put these holding tanks in and the electronics to make them work, work not only for us, but more importantly, for the entire system that they can be. So that's why we like to be able to go across the river and just to go down Powder Mill Road, hook up, spend all that money and not give any benefit except for people who probably don't want to hook it anyway. So this is, we think a win-win for everybody. That's the only comment I wanted to make about that.
Okay, great, thank you. And then my last, it's just a comment and it's not particular to your project per se. So I just, you know, I want to say I, in general, you know, it's just a concern with forty-B frankly, in general, in terms of apartments. I don't love that twenty-five percent of these are affordable, but a hundred percent count towards our affordability when, you know, markets or rents that are nineteen-hundred to twenty-seven-hundred dollars a month are not affordable for most people, but they count towards our affordability. And so a lot of people, I mean, Lou spoke about why you see most of these pop up along town lines and it's because people want to put them in places where they don't want to see them. And so we end up with these large, you know, developments that then have twenty-five percent of them are affordable and a hundred percent count towards that. And some towns like Concord use that as a way to get to their ten percent, check it off and congratulate themselves on providing affordable housing in town and they really haven't. And so my concern is just that, that as a town, we do not think by doing this, even if we reach safe harbor, by doing this in Avalon, a few other things, we get to the ten percent, that we can say, good job, we have provided affordable housing and housing for a range of needs in town. And we really frankly have not. So this again, is not an insult to your project or anything like that in particular. You know, this, this project does provide a type of housing that we do need. I think it's important that towns have a diversity of housing options, that it's not all single-family homes or townhomes or apartments or condos, it's a mix. And so I think this is important to have and you will provide a large number of affordable units, which is really great. But it's just a comment in general and for people to think about in town, so we are not, you know, I've heard more talk lately of, well, we should just build these big developments and then we don't have to deal with forty-B anymore, we don't have to deal with affordable housing anymore. And that's not, that's not true and not what I think our town, our town's goal should be. So that's my only general comment.
One of my other tasks as a consultant in this project is, is to make sure that it makes economic sense so that it attracts both debt and equity. And what it means by that is, is that this is a fifty-plus million dollar investment by the developer and a commitment to build Class A housing, not because that the goals and objectives are to just simply satisfy and put a checkbox, but truly provide in a alternative form of housing that we believe is important to be in a market for on balance. And it's important for the fact that young professionals today don't necessarily run and gravitate immediately to buy homes. They have families later, they tend not to buy until they have families. And then on, but just as important as on the other side is the fact that you have the appropriate type of housing for people who want to age and stay in the town, that they grew up and truly want to downsize. So I don't want anybody to think that this project is, you know, somehow, you know, is a lesser of some form of housing because again, we're trying to work within a particular law that exists and a requirement else for affordability that exists. It's really done so because we think there's a need and we're willing to make the investment in the community and to do the right thing to create in fact, like I said before, housing by rent or by choice. And that's a very big difference that you've got to keep in mind to, as you view this.
Sure.
And obviously we're here tonight to, you know, I can't leave here without sort of doing the ask too. So I sort of wanted to, Lou didn't touch upon it earlier, but I want to point that this is only one of several steps that would be taken to work in the town. So I, even if this board, and we certainly are asking for your support in our LIP application, were to agree and to approve such support, it still requires to go through site eligibility and then it still comes back to the ZBA for a full, you know, analysis and whatever, whatever may or may not happen. This board that we're asking today to approve and support the concept of going down this path is really just to take a, you know, to get to a fork and road and decide which way this project goes. The word friendly, I sort of look at it a little bit differently. I look at the friendly in the fact that it allows a dialogue to take place in a different level than it would be that when developers just strictly go straight to the ZBA. We risk by going this route, the fact that somebody else could be at the ZBA in front of us applying and possibly seeking and getting you in a position for safe harbor. But we think that this is a significant project, that it should involve all the boards, the Board of Selectmen in the town. And so we decided consciously to take this route and to come in front of you, to put this application and seek your support. But in no way is this the end where we need to be and no way is this application in any way going to preclude the public from having further opportunities to again, voice any concerns and make sure in fact, we live up to the standards that the town has, has today and will have in the future.
Great, thank you. And before we get to your request, I will ask if there are any comments or questions from members of the public, so if there are, just come up and state your name and street, please. Nancy?
Nancy Tavernier, ACHC. And thank you, Katie, that was an excellent segue to my comments. I know we share the same concerns about housing needs and counts and so forth. In fact, ACHC kind of sits around, ten percent, eh, safe harbor, eh, whatever, you know, we're in it for the housing needs. And I appreciate your speaking out on that. And to that point, we began working with this developer in January 2017, which was just a year and a half after our housing production plan, which had identified a growing need for rental housing in general in the town, both affordable and market. And since 2017, the need for rental housing has increased dramatically. In fact, the Acton Housing Authority now has a waiting list of one hundred and seventy-eight names, households, and they only had in their senior housing, two units turn over last year. So there is a significant problem. We're getting phone calls, even ACHC, which isn't normally someone you would call to ask about rental housing. I'm getting those calls, the housing authority is getting the calls, Laura DeSham, just, there's a significant housing problem right now. And so not only are the affordable rentals needed and will be filled instantly, but the market rentals too. Everybody in my age group is talking about downsizing and downsizing to rent seems to be the, the option of choice. So we appreciate that this is going to provide rental housing and especially the affordable units. I just wanted to reiterate in our memo that ACHC has voted to sign the application whenever you're ready and feel comfortable and we recommend you do the same. And to the discussion about targeting fifty-five and older, which is also what Avalon is doing, without being age restricted, what a great location for that, being really walkable to the new senior center. And I think walkable to services and other amenities in the area. So it's been a long process. I think we have a long ways to go. We had a public session, we went through our typical LIP process, we just dragged it out over eighteen months and, but we do recommend this.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there anybody else? Yep. Just say your name and street, please.
Hi, Helen Wolfman, Silver Hill Road. As a resident of South Acton, I'm particularly concerned about the traffic impact on South Acton as a whole. Did I understand correctly that the traffic study that's going to be done for Acton would be looking at probable trip destinations and the impact on connector roads? Is that correct?
So I think the comment that I heard is that the traffic study would be worked out or at the recommendation of town staff about what's normally we look at in traffic studies.
So who in town staff would I direct my concerns to?
I'm going to go with public works? Engineering? Yeah, Paul, Paul's not, Paul's in town engineer, so the engineering department or the Department of Public Works.
Is there a particular person or?
Yeah, sure, Paul Campbell, who's right there.
Yeah, the particular concern I have is just not just the increased traffic on connector roads, but also through cut-throughs. And a lot of those roads like Parker and River have no sidewalks, have safety issues. So it's not just the traffic impact on intersections that we have to be really careful about, it's the safety issues in our neighborhoods, so.
Thank you. Janet?
I would suggest maybe you'd like to email the town manager and he can make sure that all of town staff, people who need to know, get your inquiry.
Katie, do I direct the question to you to ask?
Yes, our question should be redirected to me.
Redirected, okay. I was involved, well, short story, the water commissioners, when this project first came up, asked me to evaluate it and give them a position, which they took on this project. But when we went through that, and we had to make sure it, it met one of the contingency questions, was that the project met the four criteria that the water district commissioners had met for, or had adopted from us for providing water to a project that was either completely or partially out of the town of Acton. So some things have since changed since we evaluated it. One of the things that we did is we met with Lou a few times and Bruce, Bruce Ringwall? Bruce? And Bruce Ringwall at the time, who was an engineering company. And Bruce Ringwall at the time, who was an engineering company. And we went through the project and we looked at, we figured out how much water was going to use in each town and how we could reduce it with some conservation features, HE machines and WaterSense machines and how they would do the irrigation. At the time, it was predicated that Maynard, we would supply water to Maynard if they took all the wastewater from both Acton and from Maynard, of course. And of course, that's changed, so that deal will be off the table probably unless somebody changes. So I guess my question is, to ask them, is are the conservation measures like HE machines and WaterSense machines, and we added the dishwashers later, is that also off the table or is the water conservation measures that we asked for agreed to, again, agreed to because of the existing conditions, since the conditions changed, are the water-saving measures also off the table?
From the nods or shakes of the head, it sounds like no.
Absolutely, absolutely not. Whatever conditions the water district imposed in terms of water conservation, if I can use that, and irrigation restrictions there, we're not changing any of those. As I said, when we went to the water district, they were kind enough, we had to give them some legal information, their council reviewed it, they said in a certain situation, they could provide water for the entire project, but that was conditioned, and I want, you know, I said it before, I'll say it again, that Maynard would provide sewer. I have no intention at this point, without going back to the water commissioners, which I don't have, hope to have to do, to ask them to provide water for the Maynard portion of the project. But all the other conditions that we agreed with the water district are going to happen. And I would tell you, separate apart from us agreeing to those conditions, the water impact fees are substantial. So I want to do all this. I'm doing them, okay? Because I can't afford, I can't afford not to, okay?
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Corby is one Parmley Drive. I live on the corner of Parmley and High Street, not very far from where this project may be located. I want to state from the beginning that I am in no way opposed to 40B. I'm an advocate of affordable housing. I'm happy to provide families who might not otherwise afford it, the opportunity to send their children to an excellent school system. My concern is really with the traffic. I've written to you previously about, I had an incident along High Street where I was almost hit. The traffic is, the volume of traffic on High Street is significant. And not only High Street, but also as a previous speaker mentioned, those connector roads, those cut-through roads such as Parker, River, and even Silver Hill. So I just hope that the town will be a little proactive rather than reactive before a tragedy happens and really consider how the significant influx of our future neighbors, our future Acton residents, might impact that area traffic-wise and really consider signs that might slow down the traffic. There are multi-axle vehicles which travel at significant speeds on those roads. And so that's really, that's my greatest concern, is that the traffic will increase and it might have a negative impact on those of us who, who walk those roads and travel those roads. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, hi. I'm Marian Matson. I live on High Street and I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I've lived on High Street for 20 years and the traffic has increased exponentially. I sometimes, there have been 20 houses built across the street from me since I moved in 20 years ago. When the first 10 came in, they told me that would be an extra 100 cars a day. This last year, we got eight more houses, another 80 cars a day. 20, 250 units, that's 2,500 extra cars a day. I now sometimes can't get out of my driveway in the morning, I count 20 cars before I can get out of my own driveway. I can't cross the street to walk my dogs on the sidewalk. And on top of that, Waze is directing everybody down High Street. So I just do want people to really consider what another 2,500 cars would mean to High Street.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? All right, seeing nobody else. So before we discuss this, Mr. Manager, I just wanted to ask you to talk about the discussions you've had with Maynard a little bit.
Yes, thank you. I've just been following their process a little bit. They've, they've held a few public hearings and they have some information on their website. I do think that the information that we were provided last week and that we discussed tonight regarding sewer, I'm not sure whether Maynard is aware of that. So I think it would be helpful to reach out and have a conversation. It's certainly different from how the project's been discussed over the last, I don't know how long. I mean, I think it's, it's an important development. And I guess also, I just heard a lot of concerns from board members about the proposal to do directional drilling and it seems like a creative solution. But is it actually part of the LIP application that it would be 100,000, 100,000 gallon tank would be constructed?
Well, typically, that's not part of a, necessarily a LIP application. A LIP application doesn't ask the question, it just asks whether there'd be utilities to it. So that being said, it is new information to us as we were exploring our options and trying to work with Paul to see whether or not in fact, we could tap into the availability in, in Acton. Maynard is not aware of these discussions yet. It's, it's on my agenda for this week. I wanted to come here tonight. But their town manager is, I think, just on maternity leave, if I remember. He's not necessarily back until sometime later this week. And so I've held off waiting for him to return.
Mr. Manager, in terms of the details of going down Paternborough Road, directional drilling and more importantly, the holding tanks, that would be something that would be implicit in the 40B permit. Having said that, and again, I hate to use this word, and that is a quote, friendly 40B, we, we have the ability, and you have the ability, meaning the town, to enter into some kind of agreement with us, okay? Which has the details that satisfies you, that would be a precondition to our application to the Board of Appeals. So, and as I think everybody in this room should be aware of, is that even if we submit a LIP application, and I don't understand why, DHCD is going to still send it back to the Board of Selectmen for 30-day review period. Doesn't make any sense to me, but that's their process. So the LIP application goes to DHCD, they're going to, after they get it, they're going to send it back to the Acton Selectmen for a 30-day comment period. It's almost the same if we never showed up here. In fact, it is the same if we did a mass housing application. So what I'm saying, John, is that if we work the details out and you're satisfied, meaning the town, we'd be happy to enter into an agreement that says, we will do the following, you know, again, on terms that are agreeable both to us and you, and that would be a precondition of us applying to the Board of Appeals. We're not, I don't want to go into the Board of Appeals with this whole thing's up in the air, town staff, town administration, the Selectmen are not completely on board. I want to have a direction. That's what I meant about a cooperative process. So that's where we are. So we only were able to put engineering from Ty and Bond to Paul about 10 days ago. And then we gave him some more information. I don't even think it was 10 days ago. So I understand that, you know, Paul or the engineering department of town is looking at this, it's somewhere around 10,000 feet. And we need to go through the details. And again, this is all at our expense. And I also made the representation when I spoke to Paul, that if you need outside consulting like Western Sampson, we'll pay for that. In other words, I'm not, you know, there's going to be a point that I think Paul will honestly say that he wants somebody else to peer review this and we'll pay for that. So I'm not looking at the town to, you know, finance this review any differently than if you had peer review for any other sewer project. So it's kind of where we are. We're just looking for the LIP application to go forward. But I expected, always expected that the details of the sewer would have to be worked out on a specific basis with the engineering department and their peer reviewer and the town. I mean, Paul brought up some interesting issues relative to maintenance and directional drilling, and I think these are things that, you know, the staff has to look at and we have to discuss with you. All right? But we're not at that point because we don't have the information. We don't have that kind of packet to give to Paul right now. We just want a sense. The sewer idea was to say, we're not, you know, you do have the capacity irrespective of the holding tanks. We were trying to go one step further and this could be a benefit, a huge benefit to the town of Acton in essentially giving you that much more capacity. That's it. Okay? So we're willing to put, you know, on paper and not just go into the Board of Appeals and say, waive all this stuff and forget about what we told the Selectmen. Okay? That's why it's quoted. Again, I don't want to use friendly, but he had the opportunity to discuss, negotiate and, you know, agree to conditions, you know, before you get to the Board of Appeals. Okay? All right? And we're willing to do that and want to do that, to be honest. Okay? I don't want to wait till the Board of Appeals to go to town staff and say, okay, look at this sewage proposal, you know, and then spend a year and a half doing that. I don't, I don't want to do that. I don't think the town wants to do that either.
Okay, great, thank you. So I guess the question to the board tonight is, do we want to sign the vote? And is the board in favor of signing the LIP application tonight? Are there questions that folks have and you want to put that off? Or, or those things that you think could be answered and then we can address when, when it comes back to us for a comment? I don't know if members have. Janet?
Although, yeah, I do need to understand the, the plan for wastewater management and, and make sure I'm just dealing with the directional drilling and all that stuff that's too technically complicated for me to understand just right now. But the project in general, assuming that there's a plan for wastewater management, then, you know, you know, I think that I'd be inclined to support it. I mean, at this stage, just to get it to, get it to the state for a review, it's a, it's a preliminary review. The state wants to sort of review the location and, and the proposed accommodations and all that sort of thing. It obviously is convenient and all that to, to services. And if we throw in the possibility of having a stop there, a shuttle, that would serve the residents who are there, that adds to it. Plus, if you have 55-plus people, they can walk to the senior center, all that. I've done so many of these sort of support letters that I know what the, the bells and whistles are that the DHCD likes to say. So, so I'm inclined to support, but have something in the letter that says, there are some issues that still need to be addressed, like, well, traffic, the concerns about traffic, not just on 62, but on the feeder roads. And then some other things, but maybe some other people have ideas.
Other members' thoughts?
I would concur with Janet.
Okay. Other things outside of traffic and sewer, you know, resolving the sewer connection issue that you want brought up in the letter, as things to still be considered or resolved?
You can, I mean, you brought up the issue of alternatives too.
Right.
Although I have to say, you know, people keep bringing up natural gas. I live in a house that's served by natural gas. We just upgraded our stove and we're going to stick with natural gas. And I really do think, reading about what happened at Lawrence, that there is a company that was really irresponsible and, you know, National, National Grid had to come in and kind of fill in because Columbia wasn't, hadn't been doing the job. I mean, they, they, there's a problem with pressure. And, you know, the concern I have there is that, you know, you have to know your company and all that. And although there are people, yeah, there are people who think little of, of all natural gas companies, I have to say that Nat, as far, National Grid is, is trying, at least working with our town, and maybe because we were proactive in getting all of our leaks mapped, but we're at least aware of where they all are. But this is an issue that exists not just statewide, but nationwide, other gas leaks. And it's been going on for a long time and it's very strange that nobody's been able to get leverage to get something done about it. But we seem to be, we have a good process in place that, okay, we're opening a road and you're going to fix that before you go and make another connection. So, and maybe everybody, it's a model for everybody else to sort of get, get on top of this. But yeah, I, I'm not going to push too hard for that, only because I know that, you know, some, some developers aren't open to it. We did deal with a developer recently on Mass Ave, whose architect is really open to dealing with alternative systems and was really kind of enthusiastic about it. So architects may be more on top of the stuff, the alternative systems than other people are, so.
Well, in this particular case, that's why we went to the architect we went to, because that's all they do, is they do 5,000 to 7,000 units a year. And so they're very much in tune with what, what it works well and, and they just supported me in another project in Tootsbury, where we did 192 units. And that project, which completed in September of, the first tenants moved in in September of 17, by April, all of them were filled. And it showed two things. One, it was similar type in terms of elevator and some underground parking. And it proved out that in fact, we were very much attractive to the over 55 sect. It was clearly based on the demographics. And secondly, if you know how to build them correctly, people will come because it's a better alternative living style, so.
Yeah, I'm not going to get into the whole debate about natural gas right now.
I think environmental sensitivity, the water, water conservation and, you know, some of the highlights, I mean, just generally the environmental sensitivity, it's, you know, considering alternatives to natural gas and then, and then just sticking with the water conservation measures that the water district had negotiated. And we, well, Peter and I both liked the setback from the river and, you know, trying to maybe think about making connections for the path to other paths that exist along the riverfront, make it more of a community location. But, somebody else?
Yes, and again, I'm, I'm not going to get into a natural gas discussion now, but because you brought it up, the point is that it's very hard, once you're connected to natural gas, to switch off of natural gas, both economically and for other reasons. But the point is to not have new connections to natural gas because it requires new pipelines for natural gas when we're increasing the demand for natural gas. And you are going to just increase the chance of leaks for natural gas when you are causing more connections to natural gas. So that, that's why when there's new development in particular, it's good to discourage the use of natural gas and encourage alternative forms. And something like this that is brand new and that is smaller units and not large houses, it's perfect for an alternative to natural gas. So that's why I think it's worthwhile to put in our letter. Peter?
Whatever we decide and talk about tonight, by the time this would get constructed, who knows what new technology will be available? Because it used to be, when we talked years ago about instant-on hot water, right? And no tanks, that everybody said, oh, it doesn't work, I'm unhappy with it and whatever else. And honestly, that's what you do now. You do, you don't, you don't put tanks in place. Why? You don't want them to leak. And B, it's a more efficient way to deliver hot water on demand anytime, you don't run out. And so I, I, my guess is, who knows where we'll be at? And all I can tell you is, we will look at that because we're concerned about marketability at that time.
Great, excellent. I appreciate that. Peter, you had something to add?
I'm just looking at the recommendations from the design review board here, which Lou knows, we like you folks to work with and pay attention to. But they had a comment about the historic structures and locating them someplace other than just at the front of the site. So maybe we had a comment on thinking about, I don't see anything in the historic commission in here, but I'm.
They also had the same comment, they provided a similar comment, it wasn't included in the packet, but they.
Yeah, I assume both of them are on the Cult Towns Cultural Resources list. I would just say, comment about preservation and creative reuse of the existing historic buildings.
Yeah, so the structures are actually in Maynard, but the historical commission in Acton did also encourage putting them on the waterfront and maybe using them for storage and that kind of thing, as opposed to just kind of in a corner on their own. But it's something that I know you're still looking at.
Are they located in Maynard now or?
Yes.
Yes, they're located in Maynard.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else people want included? Okay, then otherwise, can I have a motion, please?
Move to what, authorize, you have to sign this, right? Authorize the chairman to sign the application and I guess prepare a letter expressing the board's support of the LIP application.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Well, I, with all this stuff that we've just blathered about.
Okay, so I hear Janet made a motion and Joan seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, great, thank you very much for coming tonight. Okay. So item number three on our agenda is the board to discuss opening and closing the special town meeting warrant. Mr. Manager? So we've moved on to item number three, the special town meeting warrant. So, Mr. Manager, I understand you're proposing to open the warrant tonight and then proposing to close it on October 5. to close it on October 5th. We would vote to close it on October 15th. I think there's a couple of issues that we already know. Obviously, the marijuana zoning bylaw amendments that we'll discuss later, as well as the one related to the ballot vote that we had already approved. And then there is, the Historical Commission is working on changes to the chapter and demolition delay bylaw and that they might, they may be proposing those for the special town meeting. So, they've asked to put that as a placeholder on the warrant. So, does anybody else have any? Mr. Manager, do you want to say something, add something?
Oh, no, just that we've worked on a sort of a timeline for how we could implement the special town meeting that you called earlier this year. And I believe if we were to open the warrant sometime this week and have it close before your next meeting and take votes to that effect tonight, I think that would help us to prepare the documentation and then start the process of finalizing the warrant, to have you then sign off on it in its final form at your meeting on the 5th of November, which is actually the day before the special town election. And then the warrant would be posted on the 13th, as required by law, and the meeting would occur on December 3rd. So, that's sort of how we think it could work for a timeline.
That's right. And I think the one question we had is obviously the awkwardness of the warrant being, you know, us having our meeting on the 5th and the election being on the 6th. And one of the articles is going to be related to the question that will be on the ballot. And so, the board will have to decide, we don't have to decide that tonight, but we'll have to decide if we want to take a position on that article before the election. And if, you know, not, then we would either have to leave it blank in the warrant or have a meeting between the 5th, or between the 6th and the 13th. So, just something to think about. But does anybody have any concerns or questions about that kind of process?
So, Joan?
Yeah, so, the warrant articles we're contemplating would be the ballot vote, the zoning bylaws that relates to marijuana, recreational marijuana establishments. There would have been a historical commission.
Yep.
And it's, would be those three.
And I don't know if there was a clean, I think a housekeeping one from planning.
That's all we have at this time.
Nothing related to any land purchases or anything like that?
Oh, not at this time.
Yeah. Not at this time. Okay. And then we'd have to close the warrant by the 5th, 15th? Is that what you?
Yeah, so the proposals tonight, we would take a vote to open the warrant, maybe tonight or tomorrow, and close it on a date, presumably the 15th.
I see. And then there was the question of, on the marijuana ballot question, whether we wanted to take a position?
Yeah, we don't have to decide that tonight, but we will have to decide that. So, we'll have to take our positions on warrant articles at a November 5th meeting.
That's fine, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah. Yep. Janet, you had a question?
The other thing I know in dealing with planning, I think that the hearing, the planning board hearing on the marijuana-related zoning bylaw, that would be the default if the ban somehow didn't pass at one of the two opportunities. The vote, I think their meeting is going to be, well, Kristen's here, maybe she knows better, but I think it's on the 16th. And I don't know if that matters at all, that we're going to be closing the warrant.
I don't think we have to have the final language. We just need to have.
You just have to close it and then they can, the final thing can reflect the planning board's recommendation or not recommending. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. No other questions from board members? Questions from the audience?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I had heard that the accessory apartment, detached accessory apartments was coming on to this town meeting, the special town meeting?
I don't believe so. Joan, do you mind turning yours off when we have?
Okay, and the other question was about citizens petitions for the special town meeting. There's a way to get them on if you get them in before the closing of the warrant with 10 signatures. And I was wondering about that because I was thinking about doing a, like a land use thing regarding maybe asking people if they want, you know, to spend more money on Kelly's Corner Design as a non-binding resolution or something like that. So, I was wondering if there is an opportunity to do that?
Well, we'll be setting the date tonight about when we would close it, so you would know by what time you would have to get signatures for.
Okay, thanks. And that would be the 10 signatures?
Yes, I mean, that's the.
Just to clarify, a special town meeting has a different threshold for number of signatures. It's not 10.
Okay, so what would the, what would the threshold be? 100?
100 for a special town meeting, so 100.
To get on to that warrant?
Yep.
Okay. And my other question's related. Thank you.
Okay. Kristen?
There was, at one point, some discussion about bringing a housekeeping article forward, which related to the accessory apartment section of the bylaw. It was previously, it was previously defined as single-family and two-family dwelling with one apartment. And when the bylaw was changed a few years ago, the definite, or the name was changed to accessory apartment. And this would have just corrected one of those cross-sections and then something related to that.
Got it.
But I'm not sure if that's being brought forward for a special town meeting at this point or not.
Peter, you have a comment or question?
Kristen, is there discussion in planning about bringing forward an accessory apartment, detached accessory apartment change in the bylaw?
I've heard that there's actually a lot of people interested in that, but it would be held off until the spring for April town meeting. So, the only proposal for the special town meeting would be for just a correction, housekeeping in the existing bylaw.
Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, can we have a motion to open the special town meeting warrant, I guess, effective tomorrow? And then close it effective the 15th? Or do you want to? Does that sound good? Okay.
The 15th? Was that the 15th?
Yeah, let's do that.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Peter moved and Joan seconded. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Okay, item number four, a discussion of open meeting law complaint filed September 25th, 2018. Mr. Manager, do you want to do this or you want me to?
Sure, I'll start off. So, the board received an open meeting law complaint related to the meeting that took place on September 17th. The requirements for a community when they receive a complaint like this is to provide a formal response to the open meeting law division of the Attorney General's office. So, we have a draft response before you this evening. And if there are any comments from the board with regards to how the response is written, we could incorporate those into the final letter. We are, we are demonstrating that the complaints, that we did not do the things that are alleged in the complaint. And this letter details it over eight pages or so.
Thank you. Yeah, and so if there's any comments, let us know tonight. And otherwise, we'll look for a vote to authorize me as the chair to finalize this with town council and to sign and submit the letter. So, Janet?
I assume that Council of Ghost wrote this, or did?
Oh, Council wrote this, yeah.
Well, and it denies everything, I assume, just because I thought all the allegations that this person asserted were countered by what I witnessed to be actually happening at the meeting. So, I assume that this is just denied, deny, deny. It's multiple pages, lots of time, lots of town money, anyhow. But I'm not going to bother, I don't have time to read it right now, but I'm sure it's fine.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, I went through and I thought it was a very solid reply.
Great, thank you. Yes, Council did a good job. Peter?
Yeah, my only comment would be that this seems to be a boilerplate complaint that alleges violations of every single section of the open meeting law. I want to make clear to the public that the, this board is scrupulously follows every requirement of the open meeting law. And all of these allegations of a failure to follow the proper procedures are not true. They're simply not true. We have scripts that we, town council puts together for us. And Katie opened the session in public session before we went into executive session. We did a roll call vote, the description of the session was appropriate under the open meeting law, as far as I'm concerned. And I think it's irresponsible to simply file a complaint without really having known what happened. If you want to file a complaint, you should at least have allegations that are based on substance, instead of just alleging a scattershot of violations.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, yes, Tara.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I'm a little confused. Is this about my request for the appraisal?
No, we received an open meeting law complaint related to that executive session that had a number of allegations related to it. But that did also include accusations that we withheld the appraisal inappropriately.
So, is this the Steve Ballard did? Is that the one?
Yes, the complainant is Steven Ballard.
Okay, because I, I wasn't party to that. I had talked to him and expressed some concern about getting the appraisal, and I didn't understand why the appraisal would be held secret, since the owner would get the appraisal if we were going to buy it as a town. And if we weren't going to buy it as a town, then there would be no reason to keep it secret. And so, I think that he thought there was a concern, he was helping, and he filed it. I thought it was just a public records request, not an open meeting law complaint. But either way, I just, please don't complain to me about it. I didn't do it. I looked at it afterwards and I didn't see anything that looked unusual. I just would like the appraisal. And I thought, well, gosh, you know, I mean, you could swear me in. I mean, I'm the petitioner. And the point of the appraisal was to give town meeting members the information, and then now suddenly you guys are keeping it private. So, I would like very much to get the information in the appraisal because the, if people have alternatives to what has been offered so far by the town, that we need to get that information sooner than later. And it seems that, like, certain people get to see it and other people don't get to see it. And the certain people that get to see it are basically like pro-turning lane, like, let's, big development and lots of condos, 100 and something, 50, 80 condos. And so, there are other people that want to provide other options and, including lo-fi development commercially focused, small shops with little apartments on top. And like, we need the appraisal to actually start that work. And so, I don't understand why it's being kept secret. And I guess that's why I complained to my friends and one of them took action. So, I laud people that take action and use their rights. And so, I just want the appraisal, that's all.
Okay, so to be clear, I don't think anybody here implied that you made this complaint, so I'm not sure why that was said. Also, this is an open meeting law complaint that had a number of accusations, including that we inappropriately went into executive session, which again, we had to spend a lot of council time saying, explaining that we did not. We always follow procedure. We follow procedure in this case. And this also explains that we are within our rights to consider the appraisal as part of executive session, which we did. And we explained in our last meeting in public meeting that we were discussing that, we want to consider it further. And there's a detrimental impact to releasing it publicly to do that. So, we had also said that our hope is at our next meeting to be able to release it publicly, and we hope to do that. But we need time to further consider our options with the appraisal. So, until that time, we are not releasing it publicly. And that's all I'm going to say on that.
So, do you, so, let me just, can I just make sure that I heard what I think you said?
Sure.
So, I think you said that you're going to consider whether to release it to the public and that we'll know in a week?
Not in a week, no. I mean, we're hoping that at our next meeting, we might be able to have another executive session where we can, if we've been able to consider what we discussed in our executive session related to the appraisal, we've been able to have those further considerations, can have another discussion in executive session. And if at that time, we're prepared to make it public, we will make it public at that time. But until then, we will not.
And so, the other last thing is, this letter from, regarding the open letter, open meeting law complaint, wasn't in the packet online? And I think under open meeting law, if you discuss something in papers shared, that we're, the public is supposed to get a copy of that?
We will add it to the packet. We have a draft copy, but we received it shortly before this meeting.
And so, if you're going to vote on something that we haven't seen, that we can't say, gosh, I wish you would change this to that, it puts us in an awkward position of not being able to make public comments on a piece of paper that's being shared in an open meeting that's being voted on.
If you would like a draft right now, you can see a draft of this. But it is, again, a response by our council to an open meeting law complaint that we received.
Let me just say, Madam Chair, that there's strict timelines, that we have to respond to this complaint under the open meeting law. And I practically don't think it's appropriate for the public to be commenting on language in letters that town council is suggesting that we approve.
No, but it is a public document, so if it's requested, I'm going to provide.
It is a public document, I agree with that.
Yes.
Hi, Danny Factor 11 Davis Road. Let me say, first of all, I have not read the open meeting law complaint, so I'm not really commenting on that, just commenting on my own opinion. I was aware that Steve Ballard did file an open, a documents request and an open meeting law complaint. So, I just have a couple of questions. As far as the open meeting, the document request, what's your understanding of the date that you need to provide the documents by?
We provided a response to that request, which was that we were not going to provide the appraisal. And I believe that we, there was some other documentation that was requested that we said we could provide in part and asked if they wanted that, and then received no response to that, but did then subsequently receive the open meeting law complaint. So, we responded to the public records request already.
Thank you, I understand. So, your understanding is that there's still an outstanding question to Mr. Ballard about whether he wants other documents that you could provide? Did I get that right?
I believe so.
That he hasn't responded to?
I don't, he did not respond to that.
Right, okay.
But he resolved his public records request.
But he could still respond to that?
Sure.
I guess, yeah. Okay, great. And then, the only other question I don't understand is, I do understand that if you are in negotiations with another party about a land purchase, that's one of the reasons that you're allowed to go into executive session. So, is the town currently in negotiation with Kmart?
I'm not going to comment on that. We have, again, you can read the response that we have in there, but we are allowed to have an appraisal or keep something in executive session for a number of reasons. It's not just negotiation.
Okay. And I meant Stop &amp; Shop, by the way, not Kmart there, actually, the owner of the property. So, you're saying it's possible that this appraisal may be being kept private for reasons other than negotiation? That is possible?
I don't think we need to answer leading questions, not a chair.
Yeah, I'm going to pass on that. You can read our response to the open meeting law complaint.
Can you remind me, when you went into that executive session, there's normally a public reason that you stated that you went into that executive session? Would you mind reading the wording to me? I haven't seen it. I apologize for that.
The, I believe it is, I don't have the wording from that meeting in front of me specifically, but I believe it was related to, unless I have it, do I have it here? Here, thank you. I just want to make sure. Yep, here we go, okay. To consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property located at 252, 256 Main Street and 19 to 25 Maple Street in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
Sure, okay. And I guess just the only part that I don't understand is that certainly if you were discussing a negotiating position, that would be a reason to keep it private because it could have a detrimental effect on the outcome, and that's a loud reason to go into executive session. But actually disclosing the amount of the appraisal doesn't seem to be part of a negotiating position, because that's something that would automatically be disclosed at the start of negotiation. So, can you understand how the public, or some members of the public might be confused? of the public might be confused as to why withholding the amount of the appraisal could possibly have any sort of detrimental effect on the outcome when it will become public at the outset of negotiation? Can you understand the confusion from the general public?
I can, but again, our understanding is, and our belief is, that it could have a detrimental effect if we released the appraisal, it could have a detrimental effect on our considerations that we're having, and so we are not prepared to release that, and if you read the response to the open meeting law complaint, our council believes that that is an allowable reason to go into executive session to discuss the appraisal and to not release it until such time as we're ready to release it, or it would no longer have a detrimental impact.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for giving me this, it helps a lot. So a detrimental impact on your decision, I don't think is an excuse for executive session, it has to be a detrimental effect on the negotiating position, which requires a second party, and since a second party hasn't been engaged, I mean, if you are actually gonna go to purchase the property, I'm totally okay with you being in executive session to negotiate with the property owner, and that would make me very happy. It's that, this sort of limbo state where if you haven't, if you aren't going to buy it, then it's not sensitive, and so if you're discussing whether to buy it, then that certainly would be, I'm not even sure if that would be covered, because it has to be detrimental effect on the negotiating position, and your decision on whether to buy it or not, you may all know the number, and may not discuss the actual number, but the discussion about whether to buy something, I think is an important discussion to have in public.
Okay, again, our open meeting law response to our open meeting law complaint believes otherwise, we will file this response unless any members of the board have any changes that they suggest. John?
Just wanna mention that the part of the open meeting law exemptions that you referenced are incomplete, and there are, it's not just, it's, there's an exemption for the value of real property, and that's the reason that we're holding an executive session, and the rest of the details are in the response that we gave you.
Thank you, I just wanna.
No, I'm not, yeah, I'm not recognizing, I'm not recognizing you.
Sorry, but I didn't.
You may sit down, thank you. Are there any comments from members of the board, or can I have a motion to authorize me as the chair to finalize and sign this response?
Move to authorize the chair to finalize and submit the letter in response to the complaint.
Thank you, Janet made a motion, Joan seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, and item number five, the draft recreational marijuana zoning bylaw amendment, so I don't know if this is you, Janet, if you wanna address this.
This is really, it reflects, I actually didn't really go back and talk with the planning folks about this, this is what they drafted, but it really focuses on retail marijuana shops with all of the other marijuana-related purposes under the recreational marijuana law being covered under our existing zoning. The assumption was that the principal concern of a lot of residents in town was with retail operations, and less concern about the wholesale or the non-retail businesses, but this is going to go to planning, I have some cough drops, so between you and poor Matt, you know, I just feel as if, gee, I have all these cough drops, I should share, but this, the planning board, I understand, is gonna have a hearing on this, and so that's really gonna be the public hearing on the particulars, and people can weigh in on what, if they don't like the fact that their neck of the woods is potentially open to having a retail operation, then, then they can weigh in at that time, or if they think, you know, we need to have other things covered, other kinds of marijuana businesses covered, they can say that, but the thing is, is this is a bylaw, this is a zoning bylaw that's allowing some marijuana operations, we are allowed to do time, place, and manner regulation and some restriction, but we cannot have regulations that are so onerous that we're effectively banning the activities, so that's, if we wanna do that, then we have to have a ballot, a ballot question and a special town meeting vote on that, and we're already putting in a comprehensive ban, and this is just in case the ban fails in one place or the other, so I don't have any, if people have any concerns, they've, the draft excludes really West Acton, it excludes the areas where there are schools, and I think the definition of school is, I think, state licensed, state authorized, so I think that the after-school enrichment programs don't necessarily count, but the effort was to just carve out those locations where there are schools, and then also to put a distance requirement between businesses, to retail operations, to try to avoid their competing with each other, so, but that's, that's really it. There are some areas, East Acton Village, East Acton Village Two, limited business, and I think, what is it, Powder Mill, where, where you could conceivably, under this, if it were to be necessary for us to adopt it, you could conceivably have a retail shop, but if anybody has concerns, you can weigh in, and we can, you know, send the stuff to the planning board for their consideration when they have their hearing.
Okay, thank you, Janet. Did anybody have any concerns or comments that they wanted to share with the planning board? Peter?
It's my understanding, this just takes a vote at town meeting then, right? According to Janet, I mean, we wouldn't need to go to an election on this.
No, so the, so the idea is that if the ban fails at the ballot or at town meeting, then we would go to the zoning article, but if it doesn't, well, we could either put it in place anyways, just if a ban is ever overturned, or pass over it at town meeting.
Okay, my only other suggestion is, and I'm sure the planning board will do this, is when they have the hearing, they ought to include the map. We had seen the map earlier, and it would make it much easier to understand and see the map, so.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, great, well, and again, as Janet said, this is gonna be largely discussed with public at the planning board's public hearing, so I think that's it. All right, that is the last item on our agenda, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?